Good afternoon. Whoa, in stereo. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, November 9th work session of the Arlington County Board. We have our delegation here and all county board members. Just before we get started, I think it's worth offering very brief remarks. In Arlington, 95,000 people voted a week ago Tuesday, which is 10,000 more than had voted in any gubernatorial election. And we do have new legislators elected. And the outcome of the election in Arlington did not mirror the outcome of the election statewide. But we are moving forward and we are here to talk about our legislative package that reflects our new realities and our shared commitment to moving Arlington and as a community forward. So with that, we have a couple of different pieces to our discussion this afternoon. The first is our new legislative liaison. We'll provide a short update, a brief 10-minute update, and then we'll go to board members to describe the draft legislative package as we've done in the past. And then we'll go to our delegation for your top three priorities. I know that's always a challenge. But and then we'll talk lastly about the behavioral health crisis in the state and the impacts upon Arlington, which has been a subject I know each of us has worked on. We have a novel and new seeded approach. Look forward to the conversation and we'll start with our legislative liaison. Iljana, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Okay, awesome. Hi, everyone. It's so great to see all of you. I think this is the first time I've been in this room with all of you together. So thank you for coming over. And I'm just going to give a brief introduction and kind of overview of our state legislative package for this year. I believe I just want to make sure that Delegate Hope was able to connect virtually. Is he online before I get started?
Delegate Hope? No?
He's not. He's not here yet.
Okay.
We will troubleshoot those technical difficulties. But in the meantime, I'm going to have a slide presentation just quickly to go over the package for you. Wonderful. Okay, so if we could go to the next slide, please. Perfect. So all of you in front of you have the legislative package. But I just want to quickly highlight a few things in our human services and healthcare and land use and housing. So we're focusing on our community service board and crisis intervention center funding, as well as our mental health and disability waiver services. As you all know, we have a big Okay. Oh, much better. That is much better. Okay. So we have, as you all know, we have this behavioral health, mental health crisis going on right now. So a lot of our priorities are around figuring out a solution for that. We also have some issues related to childcare and recruitment and retention benefits for our childcare employees. And then finally, I want to bring to light the need to maintain reproductive healthcare services for all people in the Commonwealth and in Arlington County. Next, we have our land use and housing. So we just want to kind of maintain the land use policies that we've always had related to planning and zoning. Also, we've highlighted some tenant rights to improve their living conditions and give them more autonomy there. And then finally, continuing that rent relief during COVID-19 until we get out of this to make sure that we are helping our most vulnerable community members. Next slide, please. All right. So in our finance section, we talk about how we would like our taxing authority for our counties to be the same as for cities as we are. We don't have any cities within our county. Also, we are looking at the remittance of the wine tax and ABC revenue to counties. That used to be money that we would receive as a county, but that process was curtailed in the 2008, 2010 budget during the recession. And then just to maintain that local flexibility. Moving on to transportation, we are supporting our regional associations such as MVTA and NVTC to protect funding for Metro and to expand funding for the Virginia Railway Express. And then additionally, we have funding for regional transportation to improve mobility. And that touches on a lot of our non-general fund investment projects that have been secured as part of the Amazon HQ2 development. So it includes metro entrances, some Route 1 improvements, and a bus route expansion. All right, next slide, please. Okay, criminal justice reform. So we have eight different points here. I want to touch on our body worn cameras and making sure that we get some reimperceable positions related to body worn cameras. Also, we are still pursuing having an independent auditor for our civilian oversight board and allowing the county board the authority to hire that person rather than just our county manager. The next one is our race, gender, and ethnicity on driver's licenses. So giving a more automated way to collect this data that is required by the Virginia Community Policing Act. And then finally, I'm sure all of you know very well the mufflers and the noise ordinances that we've been dealing with this year with constituents concerned about the noise that has been coming and the giving law enforcement the authority to regulate this. Additionally, when it comes to education, we are very supportive of teacher pay raises without that local match component. And then we have our distance learning and youth mental health in schools coming out of the pandemic, making sure our students and teachers are as supported as they can be. Next slide, please. All right. And this is my last slide. So basically, just the general government, obviously no unfunded mandates. We're really excited about the electronic meetings for public bodies legislation that we know Elizabeth Bennet Parker's been working really hard on. And then we have in our public safety section, increasing our jail per diem and diversion efforts. And then finally, in our energy and economy and environment section, we really wanted to emphasize protecting our Clean Economy Act and REGI in light of the election results, continuing to work on our tree canopy, preserving and expanding it, potentially seeing the availability of working in public-private partnerships to continue to progress in some of our energy and environment goals. And then finally, the utility moratorium shut off during COVID-19. So thank you all for letting me kind of walk through this. Happy to answer any questions. Again, really excited to have everyone here, and I look forward to a meaningful conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Crinon. And this is, I know you've touched base with all of our delegation. But after long service by our prior legislative liaison, we are grateful for your joining us and for your hard work in putting together this legislative package, which of course, in terms of framing, we shifted a little bit after last Tuesday. So we will now go to the delegation. And I'm going to sort of partly at the suggestion of Ms. Garvey, but also based on instincts, I'm going to try a novel suggestion that we will start with the most junior of the House delegation. And so that you know this, if you're too lengthy and the two senators don't get to speak, that may not be the best strategy as you go towards Richmond. But it's also in an effort to just, if you could pick out your top three priorities, that would be great. And we'll start, we'll start with Ms. Bennet Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the county board. A pleasure to be with you all today. I will attempt to be brief. The first thing that I wanted to touch on is something that was already mentioned, which is allowing flexibility for public bodies to hold electronic meetings outside of emergency while maintaining access and transparency for the public. I know many of you have worked on this issue, and I know your board and commission volunteers have been very engaged on this issue as well. And I know that we've all seen public participation, both by members of bodies as well as members of the public dramatically increase since we've held virtual meetings during COVID. And obviously, we all want to see that continue. I've been working on this issue with a group of stakeholders from the Press Association, the Open Government Coalition, VML, and VACO. We came up with a sort of consensus draft that we presented to a FOIA Council Subcommittee about a month ago. There was not a quorum, but that was turned into a draft bill that is going to sort of will be discussed at the full FOIA Council meeting tomorrow. I had initially only been advocating for flexibility for non-elected bodies. So for our board and commission, local advisory bodies, regional bodies, and state advisory bodies. However, the group of stakeholders felt that would actually create a sort of complicated patchwork of definitions and trying to create those definitions would actually be complicating. So the draft is for all public bodies limited to two times or 25% of your meetings per calendar year, obviously with a number of guardrails to maintain and promote public access and transparency. So looking forward to continuing to work on that. Secondly, I would say early childhood education and childcare. I was pleased to see a number of those items in your package and look forward to working with you all on those. And then third, it's hard to pick just one more. So I will go pretty broad and just say partnering with local governments on items that we think can pass in this new worldview.
Thank you, Ms. Bennet Parker. That last one is definitely very broad, and we'll follow up with with questions. Really appreciate the continued work and leadership. I propose that we go through, I know there will be questions on the on the first of your priorities because we've all worked on, I think all of us in the county board have care about that issue and have worked on it. What I suggest is we go through all and then come back to questions if we can. And let me see if I have memory correct. Is it, are you next, Delegate Sullivan, or is, who's got seniority on this one?
Oh, Delegate Lopez has seniority for me. Just ask him. He'll tell you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Delegate Sullivan.
What?
My, my top three priorities are defense, defense, and defense. In light of last Tuesday, there are a lot of things I'll be really interested in making sure we can preserve in terms of things that have been accomplished over the last couple of years. But in terms of affirmative proposals, I'm going to be looking at charging station infrastructure. There's some unfinished business, a lot of unfinished business in that space. I'm hoping that the passage of the president's bill will make that less partisan because there's going to be some money in there for it. And I'm hoping we can make some progress there. I've been interested over the years in reforming our compensation system for wrongly incarcerated individuals. I'll be focusing on that. And again, I'm sort of trimming my sails in terms of some things that I would have worked on had Tuesday come out a little differently. In the environment space, I have a pet peeve for benchmarking legislation and will take another swing at that despite some concerns I have that it may not be, may not be well received. I was glad to see the board list Defense of the Clean Economy Act as number one on its environmental list. And if I can mention defense again, that'll be top on my list to make sure that that does not go poof because it's, it's important for Virginia. It's important for the world.
Thanks very much for all those versions, mostly that do, that all link to defense. Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually am looking at my Google spreadsheet here. I have 107 bills that I'm in the process of drafting. So but to talk, talk about the three that are closest to my heart right now. Improvements to the Housing Trust Fund, including addressing some livability standards as well as a warranty of habitability, addressing some improvements to the Virginia Dream Act regarding additional coverage for TPS and asylum seekers, but then also addressing some citizen requirements for professional occupational certification in Virginia. With regard to the environment, tying labor standards to tax incentives for renewable energy developments, providing 1,000 watts of electricity or more by conditioning that on apprenticeships, prevailing wage, local hires, advancing project labor agreements. So those are the sort of the three big ones. In terms of playing defense as the whip for the House Democratic Caucus, we are going to be incredibly vigilant in making sure that all of the progress we've made are not whittled away at the 11th hour, 59th minutes, 7:00 AM appropriate, like subcommittee meetings, and that we are casting a very bright light on all of the actions taken in the House. So that there is a very clear record at the end of this long session, the short session is a year and a half, but this long session that people know what they voted for.
Thank you very much. And we'll want to come back to a number of these areas. You guys are setting a excellent standard for brevity, and we will have conversation for sure. And I, I guess it would be Senate
I'm in the Senate at the same time, but he, of course, had years as delegate. I had years as a California. So I'll go
So diplomatic. Go ahead.
Thank you for hosting this meeting. It's always a pleasure to get together and appreciate that you went to get hired instead. So happy to work with a lot of them. I'm just going to talk about three general areas. There'll be multiple bills that I played in these areas. They are related to board groups that I serve on, communities that I serve on. And then, of course, I'm still chairing the FPL Service Committee. So the first area where I'm working with a very broad-based coalition on access to childcare. And we're working with the VPI program. My goal is to see that there is free girls. Now Arlington's issue is the per pupil match, you know, not that it's excessively costly, but it is a cost. And the end result is you don't come anywhere near being able to cover the true cost of childcare.
So, thank you. So we are looking to expand the opportunity for waivers so you can access a pot of money from the VPI program and allocate it as you see fit, as opposed to the per pupil allocation. There may be guidelines in there. So in fact, I shared a very detailed explanation of all the nuances with Katie Crystals because I believe she's your liaison on this. The next big area is the area of mental health. And I will be working on either budget amendments or legislation to recruit and retain mental health workers, everything from perhaps paying for their clinical supervision, which are scholarships, and then of course, bonus pay. We're looking at all kinds of things. I sit on the Joint Commission on Behavioral Health. I do want to expand the recovery centers. We put $10 million in the budget in the last go around. That's nowhere near enough. But you have a crises intervention center here in Arlington. It could be expanded, and you need more community-based services wrapped into that model. So we're looking at that, trying to help you there. One thing, I am a specific piece of legislation in addition to the things I talked about. North Carolina and other states have a transport model where the police and sheriff do not transport every involuntary admission to the emergency room. The state has a broad-based contract. It's not very good. So I'm looking to improve that. I'm looking to give local governments the opportunity to actually participate more rigorously in this third-party alternative transit, transport program. So you don't have your police and sheriffs spending time transporting individuals. Not every individual would be, would be eligible for this alternative transport. But from a patient standpoint, it's also better to not have these uniform people in our emergency rooms, which, you know, sends quite a message to folks who are there. And it's, it's very stigmatizing. So anyways, that, this thing requires a lot of detail, and I'm unfortunately, for many reasons, getting involved in it. The other big bill I will be carrying is I'm going to ensure that people don't suffer excessive medical debt. This will be as big a lift as my last bill that passed, which was no surprise of medical billing. So, so taking care of this medical debt is, is going to be a big deal. And I expect to get some bipartisan, bipartisan support for it. But I am working with, you know, the state, our VCU hospital and UVA's hospital, and then all the other private hospitals. The one thing we do have to say, I, I chair rehab and social services. A lot of the prison reform stuff came through my committee, the parole reform stuff that we did. So I have to make sure that we absolutely do not regress back. And that will be, that will be a struggle. And that will be the job of your senators here, certainly the senators from Northern Virginia. And we appreciate the diligence that our, our colleagues in the House will demonstrate when they are debating bills on the floor and pointing things out. We'll, we'll be ready to do our job in the Senate. So
Great.
It's going to be a session.
Sure. We can, you all have already started the process of preparing the, the defense and the work that we need to do. And we are grateful for your leadership, and we know it won't always be easy. But we do appreciate it very much. Senator Eben.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'll mention the reenactment portions of the marijuana legalization legislation. As you know, it's now, there's no criminal penalties for possessing a small amount of marijuana, but we have yet to stand up our adult-use licensed market in Virginia. So we're working on that. Then I have something working with the Poverty Law Center on a Safe and Healthy Homes Act, which would allow for defense of non-payment of rent if the landlord refuses to make necessary repairs, causing a property to become unsafe or uninhabitable. And one that I think I should warn you about, I don't know your opinion of it yet, is to provide for parity in the pay and resources of the Public Defender Office with the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. So that could entail a cost. Those are three that I'll mention. There's a lot of other things I'm working on, and there's a few things in your packet that have piqued my interest as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Eben, for flagging that. The Public Defender, it's one that the manager has started to invest in, county manager, and we supported. But there are additional steps that we still have to take to get there. It's good to hear. So I'm, colleagues, I, I know that we all have questions. My instinct is to just, for us to succinctly go through the, each of our items. Because then I think we actually are on track to have some real discussion. Because we do have, in an effort to be brief, we do have areas that have come up that clearly it's worthwhile for us to talk about. So I guess I would, that's what I propose unless there's concerns. We will start with human services. And Vice Chair Crystal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to our delegation for the presentation. The first, last, and most important thing under human services is the absolute crisis that we're in right now regarding behavioral health. We are fortunate to have Deborah Warren, our Deputy Director of Human Services, giving a more fulsome presentation on that. So I won't speak in too much detail about our priorities. But I wanted to make sure in talking about this part of our agenda, to really emphasize what a crisis this is for our community as we know it is around this state. And we look forward to being able to talk to you all about that in greater depth. Delighted to hear multiple members of our delegation focus on childcare. Certainly appreciate Senator Favola's work on the VPI waiver possibility so that we may be able to structure additional slots by accessing a pool. A couple of other areas on which we are focused, the state's childcare subsidy program is one in which we are constantly trying to encourage Arlingtonians to participate and Arlington childcare providers to participate. In our experience, that subsidy program amount is not that far away from what providers actually need to provide services. But it is far away enough that these centers that operate on very slim margins have very little incentive to participate in the program. We've also been working with our providers on a number of items that we can share with you both in greater detail about some of the speed bumps to participation along the way. And we think, we know the Virginia Department of Education will now be home to that program, move from VDSS. And we think there may be opportunities to address some of those small procedural challenges and get more providers participating in the subsidy program, which I think is ultimately our goal. Similarly, one of the things we have heard from our childcare center leadership is that they are really struggling to staff up, unsurprisingly. And so one of the things they've told us will help them recruit is any opportunities to participate in full benefit programs, health insurance, also retirement, which is, I know, something Senator Favola is working on, as well as supports to the G3 training program, essentially anything our providers can participate in so they can offer them as benefits to staff. I think to share more specifically, at least one of our providers has told us is DC has shifted to a universal system of pre-K. That means anyone who's qualified to be a childcare provider in Northern Virginia suddenly has a lot of incentive to go to the district and become an employee of DCPS instead. So whatever we can do to help them compete with benefits, we know where it's going to help serve our kids.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I just add one relevant point?
Sure. Go ahead, Senator.
I think the affordable housing community and other providers, including the Apartment Association, has asked me to put in legislation that, and this would be relevant to local government, legislation that specifically states residential units in a multifamily building that are used for childcare shall be designated as such, and a local ordinance couldn't overturn it. There were some issues, as you know, a few years ago, where apparently units in a multifamily building could not offer childcare because the owner of that multifamily building said it was not, it didn't fit any ordinance. So we'll take care of that for you.
That's great. And actually, to go even further, one of the things we've heard in our childcare initiative is we sometimes have property owners and landlords who are uninterested in allowing their tenants to offer this use of in-home care because of whatever. to offer this use of in-home care because of whatever inaccurate stigmas may be associated with noise, traffic, et cetera.
Right. And they were using, and they were pretending that this was a business license use and could not be a residential use. My language will clarify that.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Crystal. And there's a lot in that first section. We'll come back to it, I'm quite confident. There's also been already, I think, several of you mentioned housing-related issues, and Mr. Dorsey, next to the Land Use and Housing Section.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Crainan did a great job of going through our priorities in this area. I'll just highlight a couple of them. The Tenant Eviction Prevention and Assistance, Virginia's rental relief program has really been a model in the country and has been one of the most effective programs at getting money out the door and into the hands of people who need it without putting significant bureaucratic limitations on the people in need. It's a model. Hopefully, it's not prematurely turned off in some desire to get past this pandemic. I think we all know that this pandemic is going to have a scarring effect, and the impacts are going to reverberate long after we officially declare that it's over. And if we're not going to roll back the incredible insecurity that people have felt, programs such as this are really necessary. And so we encourage and will work to support that it be funded at a level that's sufficient with the need. Delegate Lopez, your work in the Housing Trust Fund, always appreciated. We certainly support your efforts at program improvements, but also are mindful that the level of funding is something that we shouldn't take for granted, and we certainly always viewed it as inadequate to deal with the needs for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. That remains true. We want to partner with you to figure out how we support both those program improvements, as well as overall sufficiency of the trust fund. And when it comes to tenant rights, something that we've been grappling with a lot in Arlington, you know, there are great protections if people are victims of discrimination as it pertains to fair housing. We've had some great improvements in adding sources of income as a protected class. And a great thing for tenants, at least, when violations are of that ilk, they can seek redress, and there's going, going to be an investigation into that matter, with some efforts made at conciliation, but if conciliation is not possible, there will still be an investigation. Much, however, of what puts tenants in jeopardy, even though it may be prohibited by the VRLTA, there is no similar enforcement mechanism that is in place. It's really up to the tenants to gather the legal support and the wherewithal to seek redress for, for many of the issues that may be covered under VRLTA. So we support processes that kind of use the model of fair housing to really fully protect tenants for all that they may experience.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. I'm struck by, not every land use matter that we consider on a Saturday or Tuesday reveals the policy depth of colleagues, and so I'm just struck by how lucky we are to have both of your expertise, really, in each of the areas. Mr. Karantonos, next is Finance.
Actually, I think it's.
Oh, oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I think I was supposed to have finance, but actually, finance particularly here is pretty self-explanatory, the four issues that we've got here. I will not, not, not pretend to be an expert on finance. I think here playing defense is probably going to be really important, and we look forward to your doing a good job on that and letting us know when we can help. I would be interested in a little conversation on number four, which is the equal taxing authority, and of course, Faco's had that for a long time. It strikes me often that Arlington, I mean, a lot of people think we are a city, right? It's just, we're even sort of different than some counties. So I don't know if there's any kind of observations any of you on the legislative side want to make about this equal taxing issue, and maybe particularly as it applies to Arlington, which feels like a different county than a lot of our counties.
We, last year, I guess it was last year, maybe it was 2020, I apologize, it was 2020, we did pass a framework for equal taxing authority for counties. Now, it was phased in, and you should be able to get a copy. You couldn't have a referendum, for example, on increasing taxes that you were eligible to do for a few years, but it's, it is on the books. So I should, I don't have it in front of me. It's rather detailed, but we can give you, you know, the specifics. Also, there was something about the stamping of cigarettes. There's a study going on related to that. So you do have a framework for equal authority, but it's going to be, and it's not exactly equal, it's authority to use other, to raise other revenue streams that you haven't traditionally been able to use.
Thank you for reminding us about that. And what occurs to me now is maybe this one, we want to just kind of keep our heads below, because we don't want to remind anybody that that's in there already.
No.
All right.
Now, one of the big conversations I think we're going to have is all going to be on tax and spend, and what kind of tax cuts we'll have to manage, because that will have a long-term effect on our budget.
Yeah, yeah. I've got education, too. We'll get there soon. How are you going to, you know, increase teacher salaries and cut taxes is an interesting question. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey, for getting the, there's a whole host of big-picture questions raised for me, and how appropriations intersects with phasing in of laws, with the change that's come. But we'll get to that conversation, but I also, there's a whole big picture, and with respect to number four, it is a question that I had wondered about, the equal taxing authority, and we had talked a little bit about with Ms. Crainan. And so we'll be ready to learn from you, sort of, what the law currently is, and then what, what might change. But on to Mr. Karantonos for transportation.
Which is also a big ticket, right? And critical for our economy, as you know, here, and also critical for how our economy and our well-being is connected to Virginia's well-being and, and progress. When you read through the three items that are listed on the Transportation Chapter, the Transforming Rail Program is really critical for us here under the item number one. This is the funding for UMATA VRE and the Transforming Rail Program. I had many times the opportunity to talk with the Secretary herself, and, and she always reminded me, to the current Secretary, I should say, Valdade, right? She always reminded me that when she got this famous one-seat connection from Lynchburg to, to Washington DC that transformed the, the economic prospects of the, of the city of Lynchburg, as well as it, you know, connected us here, and we could have this, this live economic umbilical cord with Central Virginia. So we really think that this is really critical. During the pandemic, some may have lost, you know, the sense of urgency and importance, you know, about UMATA funding, but this is definitely part of our recovery efforts, and it will be critical to, to sustain that. Same applies to the, the NVTA funding, especially the one that was, that we mentioned here was diverted in 2018, and the reminder of the 38.5 million that still need to be restored from that. I don't know where, how, how realistic are the prospects for this will be, but for us, this is really critical, and, and you hear it almost daily, that we're not, we're not done with the state of good repair, and this needs the financial support. As well as item three, which is the, the funding, ensure that the Commonwealth keeps the non-general fund investments, the 195 million that are listed here. The, these are, these are many smaller projects that make a very big difference down along Richmond Highway, where Arlington's now growing very vigorously, not only because Amazon HQ2, but also because the, the new higher education investment with Virginia Tech coming in and, and all the above. So that, this is really critical, and we very much hope that we will, will find also bipartisan support and understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonos. And just very, really briefly, I mean, I think it's worth, Delegate Hope has joined us virtually, and I, I think it would be remiss if I did not congratulate Mr. Karantonos, as well as each of the delegates, for your election. We know that that is a ton of work, so congratulations. We'll keep working through this criminal justice reform. I'll take that section. The first priority continues to be a priority. With clear eyes, I'd be interested if that is something that Reform Prosecutor Office Funding Formula, so it's more focused on diversion and more focused, we could reframe that in terms of containing costs, but I'll be interested in insights there. Immigration inclusivity continues to be a priority. The third item, civilian oversight boards, we are going to continue with our independent auditor piece. We have worked with some of our advocates and are putting off for a year one of the components with respect to, sort of, the confidentiality component, which we will pick up if and as circumstances might, may allow. Reimbursable positions to body-worn cameras is an example of an area where I think we should stay in close touch, because we're also seeking to make that a budget priority of ours. And we did have a call with the current governor, trying to make the case for funding, but that continues to be a priority. The fifth priority is something that I know Senator Eben has, there's an area of sort of collaboration there with respect to traffic stops and including race and gender, so that there's not a discussion. Instead, it's there as required. So there'll be additional legislation that I think would be needed there. Our other pieces, I know is, are, the last three are important to each of you, and I know we'll have discussion. I appreciate Mr. Karantonos for the work on the mufflers and noise ordinance, which is an issue that's come up recently. So with that, I think it's back to Ms. Garvey for education, which you touched on briefly.
Yeah, thank you. And that, too, obviously, you're working with our school board, I assume, and their, their legislative liaison is Wise. And this one, I, I'd like to focus, I mean, there's the teacher raises and the, and the matching issue, which I think Senator Favola brought up. That's always a hard, hard one for us. And again, I think if, if this incoming governor is, really wants to raise teacher salaries, as he says, they've got to do something about the match, because we are, obviously, there are other areas that have a lot more trouble with the match than, than we do. Youth mental health, again, you know, with the pandemic, and you all know this, it's just the mental health issue is much stronger, and we just do not have the number of counselors that, that are needed. Support for distance learning, this, you know, hopefully, we're about done with this pandemic, and we don't need to do, but who knows what comes later. And on this one, I think an argument can be made for trying to use this, the pandemic to help us get into the 21st century on education. There were a lot of innovations that were done, and I'd hate to see us go back to, well, we just have to do things the way we had always done them, which is back to the 20th century. Can we build on this and actually provide some support for schools to, to build on the learning, the painful lessons that we've got, but that we could move forward and, and help our schools all the way across the country? So hopefully, that, that will happen as well. So those are the three that we've got here. Happy for any feedback from folks on that.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Garvey. And I'm realizing, I think it's, I think we work to Mr. Karantonos on general government. Briefly, I want to make, leave time for, for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll be very brief. Ms. Crainan has already highlighted the two important, the most important or salient priorities, the, our opposition to any unfunded mandates, that's very clear. I don't believe there is any local government that would have any tolerance for that. We, we really, this is basic good governance, and the, the second is the electronic meeting for public bodies. We would really appreciate the help here to continue with the type of, to continue using technology and the ability to participate in meetings remotely where appropriate and needed. That, that would make our life, civic life here in Arlington way, way better. I don't want to under, I mean, there are, there are four, there are three additional items, prevailing wage alignment. This is, this is really important, in my, in my opinion, and I believe that it has, that there's a good reason why it's on the list here, as well as the, the other items, but the prevailing wage alignment is, is critical. We passed this ordinance here, and we want to really see that a little bit complete.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonos. We just have a couple of sections left, and I'm realizing that we'll, we'll go to you first, Mr. Dorsey, on our side, with respect to questions. We have many priorities, and we'll start first with Ms. Crystal on public safety and emergency, but as we get to questions and discussion, I'm noticing that we didn't quite parse out everything quite equally, and want to go to you. Go ahead, Ms. Crystal first.
Certainly. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items to flag under public safety. And Delegate Sullivan, you mentioned compensation in jail, so I think that I'd be interested in further discussion. There, we, we want to encourage an increase in the state per diem funding, just for context. The, the actual cost of having someone in the Arlington Detention Facility is close to $334 a day. The state reimbursement rate is $4 a day for people with local charges and 12 for those with sentences of two years or more. So as our sheriff, Beth Arthur, would, I'm sure, talk about, given the opportunity, there are a great number of programs really focused on service and, and helping improve and reduce the rate of recidivism among those residents of our, of our jail currently. $4 a day is very little when it comes to, to trying to be able to do that, let alone run a humane operation, which is important to all of us. Also, just want to highlight diversion efforts, so that folks don't end up in the Justice Center in the first place. We have had some excitement, I think, around an innovative model on not only our longstanding drug and substance abuse court, but increasingly our behavioral health docket, which we are, again, really excited to divert people from the criminal justice system, which we think is the most important way to go forward in general. These are, however, really costly to operate. Arlington's been able to largely do that out of local funds. We'd love to see that model expand, not only locally, but certainly around the Commonwealth and state support for those jail diversion efforts would go a long way in doing so. Thanks.
Great. And I'll finish, our summary on energy and the environment, and we've touched on the first two defense priorities of Clean Economy Act and Regi. The rest of, we've talked about public-private partnerships. There, there's a lot in number three that we've sought to preserve from our original draft package. We framed it as individual energy choice with number four, ratepayer protections. The last two, Tree Canopy and the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. I guess I, I hold out hope. I think hope and optimism, along with very clear-eyed pragmatism, will be necessary in this new session. So I guess what I'd suggest is to open the floor. We have a few minutes for discussion. I think there's some areas that we might want to touch on. We also do have a behavior, as we get towards 4:30, bottom of the hour, we'll seek to get to behavioral health crisis, which I think, I hope that there's some common ground on. So I'll just sort of open the floor to see if there are individual areas that you have concerns on. I also kind of put some notes. There's, there's things that, that stand out, but I don't see lights. I'll go to Mr. Dorsey and then, and then Senator Favola. Go ahead.
I'm happy to throw out something, but do we want to give Mr. Hope an opportunity?
Yes.
Do you share his priorities?
He was so collaborative that he said, you know, keep going forward. So Delegate Hope, is there anything you wanted to add? Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, I, I don't think so, and I think the behavioral health issue is going to be one that's, that's going to get a lot of people's attention. You know, we did pass the ARPA funding to, we put some federal dollars for January to, to put towards salaries and through community-based services. I think that will be an emphasis that we'll carry through, and I, I do believe that that has bipartisan support. The other thing that, that I'll be focused on is more of a priority for me, is, is within the Department of Corrections. Not surprising that we have a workforce problem throughout the state, and it's not just our behavioral health system, it's nursing homes, it's assisted living, it's also correctional officers, as well as law enforcement. officers as well as law enforcement. And so I'd like to see some emphasis on correcting some of these shortages, the recruitment and retention that we're experiencing throughout the system. But in particular, within the Department of Corrections, I've been working really hard to try to get an ombudsman, an independent oversight ombudsman over the Department of Corrections. And I'm hoping that a report comes out that can be a bipartisan issue that we work on to really put some oversight over an agency that's $1.5 billion and growing, oversees 30,000 inmates and about 12,000 employees. And so I'm hopeful that that will, the report that I've been working on will come out favorably and we can make some progress there. So those are just a couple of areas I wanted to highlight, but certainly I appreciate the conversation and listening and glad to support the county any way I can.
Thank you, Delegate Hope. Back to Mr. Dorsey for a question, and then over to Senator Favola.
So I'm going to ask a weird kind of question for us at this forum, but maybe to bring some optimism or at least a reduced sense of pessimism to the conversation for our General Assembly members, based on your experience working with some of the returning people from the other side of the aisle, are there areas of maybe mutual interest that you think we might be able to make progress on in this session that may not necessarily be a priority level for us, but nonetheless might be things that we're interested in at least trying to shape?
There is, just then to you, Delegate Hope, but first to Senator Favola, unless you were, you may have had a different topic that you wanted to focus on. Over to you first.
I was just going to follow up Delegate Hope's point. We are looking at barrier crimes and whether we can put in legislation that perhaps under certain conditions with certain crimes, if somebody who's served their time and has maintained a clean record for around five years or seven years, especially if it's a drug felony or sort of a nonviolent felony, perhaps we can get something passed that would then enable a certain workforce, especially if you're looking at peer counselors who frequently have had past drug convictions but are very good at their peer counseling responsibilities. And so we have to think creatively, and that's, I just wanted to put that on the table. And then just one other thing, I'm sorry I didn't say this earlier, but on the taxing authority for cities and counties, most of the framework hangs around the ability of counties to implement a meals tax, which you already have.
Got it.
That's where most of the money's coming from. So, and then, of course, there's a cigarette tax and some others. I will send you the framework.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Senator Favola. Over to Delegate Lopez on the sort of areas of mutual interest and, or, you know, go ahead. And all feel free if you're comfortable, as long, you know, certainly keep your masks on or off. I'm, have mine off because of, in a little more space. Go ahead.
Sure. So this is not a situation like it was in the past where we were 34, 32 Democrats. It's a 48, 52 as of right now. So I think you will be able to find some mutual interest in terms of ratepayer issues when it comes to the energy issues, also in terms of small business support and incentives. And then also, interestingly, with the work that was done with Chesapeake Bay utility or water utility issues over the last year with SLAF funding and the ability to maybe continue to improve the Chesapeake. And then finally, with regard to broadband, there is still a bipartisan support for addressing that like last mile issue as it relates to southwest, southside Virginia. And then I think if you can address some aspects of incentivizing community college, incentivizing maybe the G3 program for renewable energy jobs, as well as some form of community college that is, makes it easier in certain parts of the Commonwealth, I think you might be able to find some mutual support there. And then finally, with regard to specific infrastructure issues as it relates to K-12 schools themselves, because of the antiquated nature of, not antiquated, but like, some of the buildings, the actual buildings themselves that were built in the 20s and 30s and 50s are falling down in southwest, southside Virginia. And so there is, I think, some mutual interest in addressing those, those issues as well. But like I said, 52, 48 is a very different dynamic, so that makes me hopeful.
Thank you, Delegate Lopez.
But I follow up with a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Just on Delegate Lopez, because you were saying on broadband, that last mile issue for southside, we sort of have the last mile issue too. Are you seeing that it would be addressed for part of the state and not the whole state?
Sorry, I didn't hear anything you just said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You were nowhere near the microphone.
I'm so sorry. All right, let me take my mask off to start and get, I apologize, I can hear myself clearly. On the issue of the broadband, that you said that the last mile issue for south and southwest, that'll sort of be a focus. We also have last mile issues here.
Right. Route 1 corridor.
So would that be all together, or are they going to just carve out for part of the state and not the rest of the state?
I would hope that we make sure this is something that is addressed throughout the Commonwealth. You have significant amount of funding coming out of the infrastructure package that was just passed at the federal level this week. And so there will be significant amount of money to address this in every corner of the Commonwealth. But yes, the idea that South Arlington has significant connectivity issues, the fact that the Route 1 corridor, Southern Fairfax have significant connectivity issues, the fact that when you drive to Stafford, all of a sudden you lose cell coverage, yes, this is something that affects everyone. But the fact is that the Republican majority, especially the folks who are now in the leadership of the Republican majority, are going to care specifically about southside, southwest Virginia. So yes, will we make sure this is something for everyone? Yes.
Okay. Well, I do, there's, we talked about energy a little bit. We have moved forward with collective bargaining. My impression is that there's a majority in the Senate that would, I guess the big question is to the Senate is, and there are a couple of senators in particular that there's question about, but my impression on collective bargaining and some of the labor issues is that there, that all senators have at least some commitment there. I don't know if you can speak to that, either Senator Eben.
Are you talking about moving forward with more labor protections or just maintaining what we have?
Keeping the law that we have.
Yeah, we passed what we passed, and I don't think the Commerce and Labor Committee is likely to go backwards.
Great, because I don't know everything about two senators in particular.
I guess that's my job as whip to make sure we don't, we don't unravel anything that we already passed. And I think Senator Eben's correct.
Got it. I think that that covers most everything.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, first, in addition to, you were asking about areas of potential compromise with the new House, with the new governorship and House leadership, mental health is one area and teacher pay would be another, you know, in whatever format that comes, where I think you'll see some movement. But I wanted to ask you all, you wanted the authority for the county board rather than the county manager to hire an independent auditor for the civilian oversight board? And I was just wondering if you could tell us more about that and if someone's working on that. I don't know, I'm not too familiar with it.
Sure, that's probably my mistake for not including. We have started working on that and actually Delegate Hope and Senator Favola are willing to work on it. And we don't know, obviously, we don't know in this new environment whether that would move forward. It seems to me an issue that would, that really would just impact us and our form of government, but we also have to see. And I know you, you know, you have.
But that's just an oversight in the original bill as to who is designated to hire the authority, to hire an auditor.
Under our form of government, the manager is, has authority de facto. We have to go to Richmond in order to get this changed.
Got it.
And so it wasn't so much, it's something that the board was unified on.
Arlington is unique.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to ask you about was the reform of the prosecutor office funding formula. Is there a coalition of localities working on this, or is this, is this just an idea or has there been discussion at VACO or VML or otherwise?
This is one I don't know off the top. I don't know about VACO. Alana?
So from my understanding, it's at least Northern Virginia localities, all the localities in Northern Virginia are getting together. I believe that the Commonwealth's Attorney's Association Group is also pursuing this as well. So I think it's more than just our county.
Good. I'm on the Public Safety Subcommittee of Finance and Appropriations and be happy to work on that with you all. So I'll talk to Ms. Krainin offline about that.
Thank you, Senator Eben. That's really helpful, yes.
Just another point of emphasis, I do believe that because the police and uniformed services were supportive of the Marcus Alert legislation, the police know they've got a very complicated job, and they also know that in certain cases, it would be helpful to have a mental health person on site. So I think we should take this opportunity and really try to advocate pretty strongly for more funding for the Marcus Alert, because I do think that would garner bipartisan support. The State Association of Community Services Boards is coming in with a large appropriation ask, but I think we will, again, get support from maybe the state police association and the state sheriffs and so.
Great. So I think we'll close out just with, is there anything that, because I know it's a shared interest, is there anything that you wanted to add, Ms. Bennet Parker, about the FOIA area? Or did you cover it in the sense, and then we'll go to you, Delegate Lopez?
I think I covered most of it in the interest of time. Happy to follow up with anyone who has any additional questions.
Okay, great.
And I'm happy to follow up as well, but I did have some questions for the county about what's happening with walkability issues in Crystal City. I've had several meetings now with the bid and with the civic association leaders and with some bicyclist associations, talking about overall walkability and what the long-term planning is with VDOT in terms of where they are in that process.
Yeah.
The Route 1 corridor.
I think that vice chair Crystal's probably best, and I do see Mr. Dorsey's light as well after that.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your engagement in that issue, and I think this is an opportunity to express that we appreciate very much VDOT's willingness to approach that Route 1 to grade planning project with an unusual level, I think, of understanding that we are an urban environment and wish to prioritize walkability and bikeability. As the administration changes, I think that's something that we are going to be watching with a close eye and could very much use your help. I think that culture change or orientation at VDOT has been really hard-won, and I think we're all worried that it won't continue. But, you know, obviously there are so many projects underway there, and I'd be happy to, and as I know my colleagues within our staff, to talk in great detail about any of them. It is an opportunity to put in a plug for, as Board Member Karantonis mentioned, the decision in 2018 to meet the state's commitments to AMADA capital by essentially defunding NVTA, actually had reverberations for things like multimodal walkability, bikeability, because we use a lot of our 30% funds, which is to say the local funds from NVTA, to fund those types of projects. And so when that funding was rerouted to AMADA from NVTA, it meant we lost our opportunity to fund some of the many projects we'd like to do. So I don't know if this will be the year to restore or continue to restore funding to NVTA, but it is an opportunity to plug that it has that downstream impact.
Great, so we are joined by our, we'll go to our mental health and our presentation from Debra Warren in just a moment. If you want to sort of work your way forward, I believe, that would be great. I did want to give, I don't know, Delegate Sullivan, if there's anything on the energy and environment area, I think that the leadership potential contest with respect to the Republican side has been resolved. And I wondered if you wanted to comment a little at all on maybe that, I know Delegate Lopez knows as well, but about the bigger picture framework and how that might impact, are we at real danger on the Clean Economy Act? I assume some of it's in statute, and then there's appropriations that would be needed for other pieces of it, but I could be wrong. Is there anything you wanted to say on that?
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair. The answer is I don't know. I certainly hope, you know, I'm a sort of congenitally glass half-full kind of guy, so I'm hopeful that the progress we've made won't be undone. The incoming speaker has indicated a desire to make changes in the Clean Economy Act. The incoming majority leader voted for it. That was then, this is now. But was it? To see the governor, incoming governor, governor-elect, did not have particularly complimentary things to say about it on the campaign trail. So I'm in wait-and-see mode, and I'm certainly ready to do what I can to, to help the Senate be a brick wall against any changes to the Clean Economy Act.
Well said. I mean, I guess it's just a reiteration of, we have, our priorities, many of them stayed the same, a couple of them changed since a week ago Tuesday, but many of them were reframed. And so both the hope for the best, but prepare for the worst, I guess feels like, or prepare for the challenges with respect to the ideals. Arlington will continue to go forward. We are confident of that based on all of your great work and, you know, on the lineage of board members for a long time. So I do enough from me, there's a huge area, which is behavioral health, and Debra Warren, please join us, and if you could describe some of the issues going on. This is very time-sensitive and very important as we try to serve those in many ways most in need in our community. Go ahead, Ms. Warren.
Thank you so much. I very appreciate that you were here, and I really appreciate seeing all our legislative friends. You know, we're all public servants and we do it because we care, and that's my honor of.
There you go. You may want to hold it a little closer, but you're set. Thank you, Ms. Crystal.
Yes, I'm Debra Warren. I'm the Deputy Director of Human Services and the Community Services Executive Director for Arlington. And I've been in the CSB world now for 36 something years and in the field for longer than that. And I have here with me my colleague, Mike Rowling, who is, Captain Rowling, who is going to share in this discussion, because we've been working shoulder to shoulder on this issue really intensively since July 9th, when the state admissions to the state hospitals closed down virtually, you know, the majority of the hospitals closed down. Everybody knows this is a crisis. I know that every single person in this room and every single person who's watching has a loved one who has experienced a behavioral health crisis or a crisis with substance use or developmental disability or a combination of those. We have had a crisis with having insufficient behavioral health beds for a very long time, and we've had insufficient community-based resources really since community mental health centers were established in the 60s. They've been severely underfunded. Here in Arlington, we've had the generous support, of course, from the county so that we've been able to really supplement the money that we receive from the state and Medicaid. On July 9th, when the beds, admission to state hospital beds went offline with no planning or preparation or funding for alternatives, we have, all communities have been, in Virginia have been really, really challenged. And here in Virginia, or here in Arlington, how it's really played out is that we've gone from spending a few hours looking for a psychiatric bed to spending days searching for an appropriate bed. Now, what does this mean for the people that are in the crisis? What it means is that on the worst day of their lives, they're shackled to a gurney, handcuffed to a gurney, under police custody, agitated, not getting any real treatment, maybe getting sedation. Our partners in the emergency department at the Virginia Hospital Center are terrific, and they're just so hardworking, but this is not their primary role. They are not, they don't have psychiatrists there to provide the behavioral health treatment that that individual needs. That individual needs a psychiatric bed on a unit. And so what's happened is that on any one day, according to Mike, Dr. Mike Silverman at the emergency department at the Virginia Hospital Center, there may be five to 10 individuals a day waiting for a hospital bed. CSB staff are working around the clock, making phone calls, trying to secure a bed. And it's consuming an enormous amount of their time that could be served actually providing crisis, you know, stabilization in the community. And our police partners, and my colleague here will share a little bit more about that, are off duty. They're, I mean, they're not, they're on duty, but they are not in the community providing those public safety services that we expect from them, because they're at the emergency department with these individuals in custody once they've been detained. So we have been working at every level to address this problem concretely. We have been working on a regional crisis stabilization unit called, it'll be run by RI International, it's housed in Chantilly, it's about to open, we're waiting on the fire marshal, and that will have 16, no, it'll have 23 beds, and it'll be a law enforcement drop-off center. It will provide longer-term crisis stabilization, and then ultimately it will increase and provide 23-hour crisis stabilization. We're very excited about pulling that resource online. That's been a long time in the making. We are also developing a regional crisis call center with support from the state, Department of Beha- of Behavioral Health. We are working fast and furiously through the RFP process to get that up online by July 16th, because that's when 988, the federal-legislated, 988 crisis call line will be established and be law. And we are working on expanding greatly mobile crisis. We have a program that we started in the region called CR2 that provides mobile crisis to children and adolescents, and we are basically doubling that to provide lifespan services. Here in Arlington, we have a crisis intervention center, and we've been working nonstop to see how we can adapt that facility and that programming to accommodate individuals in crisis 24/7/365. And the county was generous enough to provide funding, but because of the national and statewide and local workforce shortage in this particular area in behavioral health and specifically around licensed individuals, let alone people who can do pre-screening for emergency services, which is another certification that takes five to six months, we have not, still not been able to fill those positions. We're working on that. We are also working on hiring individuals to be clinic aides, psych techs, to be able to provide support to individuals in our crisis intervention center. But all of this is not enough. We have to fully fund the entire continuum of behavioral health care if we are going to solve the state hospital crisis problem. One solution that I do not support is buying community hospital beds. This issue arose late last week when I saw in a document that the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services was planning to purchase 16 new beds at the Virginia Hospital Center. These are the same beds that this community has been advocating for in extremely powerful way for five years and working very closely with the Community Services Board, the CSB staff, and the hospital on what those, what that, the design of that unit, the number of beds, coming to an agreement on a formula for that number of beds, and working collaboratively on a certificate of public need, which was recently submitted. The hearing is on Monday night, the public hearing for that is on Monday night. So we're very concerned about that. I did send an email to the department about that and spoke to the commissioner this morning, who said, "No, no, no, we're not purchasing beds. We're just incentivizing hospitals to take patients that would otherwise go into the state system." So anyway, we'll, hopefully, it's clear that the Virginia Hospital Center beds belong to this community because they're desperately needed. And patients that are lingering at the Virginia Hospital Center are patients that might otherwise go to the Northern Virginia Mental Health Institute but can't get in there because of diversion of individuals throughout the state to the Northern Virginia Mental Health Institute because of the other hospitals not accepting new patients. It is a dire situation. In my mind, it's going back to like, mental health in the '50s, you know, before we had good psychotropic medication. It's inhumane. It is, it's, it's a system that was, that has been historically underfunded and is now just not meeting its responsibilities. So we're doing everything we can. We appreciate, apologies, we appreciate the support of the county board in terms of supporting use of ARPA money to staff, at least get the staffing started for the crisis intervention center. And again, we're doing everything we can at DHS and with our Community Services Board staff, but it's not enough. We need to fully fund Step VA. We need to support funding for, to develop our workforce, and there are several strategies for that. But I'm going to turn it over to Captain Rowling to give the police perspective on what's happening on the ground.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Captain Rowling.
It's testing.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So real quick, I just want to touch on how this is impacting the police department as we work with Department of Human Services. We seem to be in meetings almost daily, if not weekly, trying to work this together. With the closure of all these hospitals, not having these beds, these individuals have to go somewhere, right? And unfortunately, the police end up being involved in the process much, much longer than I think anybody would wish. So what happens is, as Ms. Warren mentioned, is that they get up to the hospital, and because no beds available, the ECO will expire, and then they'll get a TDO, and that gives us up to 72 hours to keep them in our custody until a civil commitment hearing can be done in order, again, to find a bed. Historically, before July, before this happened, we were able to usually find a bed much sooner due to transport, and this really wasn't an issue. But now, because there are no beds, there's no place to put these individuals, what happens is, is that we're now going beyond 72 hours, a civil commitment hearing is had, and then they're being told, okay, you're going to be committed to the Virginia Hospital Center up to 30 days with no treatment until a bed can be found. So what that does is a couple of things. Number one, legally, under the current code, how it's written, law enforcement has no legal authority to detain these individuals once that TDO expires and a civil commitment order is issued. We don't have any legal authority. So we, we're basically keeping people, unfortunately, against their will. So we brought this matter temporarily to our general district court, where the Honorable Judge Rucker was able to give us a temporary court order, which allows us to detain these individuals until noon the next day. All that did was buy us a little bit of time, buy DHS and their staff a little bit of time to try to locate a bed and to allow our police department to legally detain these individuals, at least until noon that next day. Unfortunately, if a bed does not become available again, then the only recourse we have is to start the process all over again, where they have to be evaluated, see if we can get an ECO, do a TDO, and start the clock over and over and over until a bed becomes available. Unfortunately, this can take, you know, three, four, five days, where normally, historically, before July, this might have been the same day, you know, or maybe a couple hours, or at the most, maybe a day. As you can imagine, this has a huge drain on resources for the police department, as Ms. Warren alluded to earlier, is that if we have five to six, seven officers up at the hospital with these individuals, number one, they have no privacy, they're not in a room, they're in the hallway of the emergency room just waiting, and they're in police custody shift after shift after shift, from days to evenings to midnight, day after day after day, I can't imagine they're getting any better, because they're not getting any treatment whatsoever. So we really need these beds to become open. We really need to have some kind of modification to the code to get law enforcement the authority to actually be able to legally detain these individuals and not just use the court order that we're temporarily using, because right now, law enforcement is actually more involved in the mental health process than we ever have been, that I know of, in about 25 years I've been here. So it's very unfortunate, it's a no-win for anybody. We really need these beds available so these people can get the treatment they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Rowling. Did you want to offer any concluding thoughts, Ms. Warren?
Yes, I, I know that this issue has gotten a lot of attention. People are aware that it's a crisis, but I think that, I think that what we need to focus on is what can we do as a community? How can we reinforce and expand community-based care? Because that is, that is providing care before the crisis hits, providing early intervention, and it's, it's, we want to, we want to avoid the kind of situation that Mike and I are talking about. And I know that you all might have some questions, so we're available for that.
Thank you very much. I guess the first, and I know we've seen leadership from our county manager, and Ms. Crinon, in different ways, has tried to pull us together. We did make an attempt to talk with the current administration's Secretary Lopez on additional resources that you joined in. Others are also experts. Senator Vol-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Warren. I think it's important to know that the Virginia Health and Hospital Center submitted a proposal, which may be VACO, and others can get behind, and just about every hospital across the state, these private hospitals, is asking for more psych bed approval, more approvals for psych beds. They still have to go through the COPN process. They're called behavioral health beds, but, just to be technical, but the Virginia Health and Hospital Center is working with its members, trying to get dollars from the state to increase this capacity, and they're having trouble being heard, which is unfortunate. So to the degree that local governments could work with the hospital association to amplify that voice, I think it would be helpful, because we do have some resources available. And it is unclear to me whether the state is attempting to reduce permanently the size of our state mental health hospitals, or, I don't know what the long-term goal here is. And there doesn't seem to be an articulated plan, and we need to figure that out. First point. Second point is, we did increase funding for the Step Virginia, and the Northern Virginia jurisdiction is using it, I think, pretty wisely, but we do need more funding, and we're aware of that, especially if you're going to implement that Marcus Alert in any meaningful way. At the end of the day, the folks who are identified as having a crisis, even though the police were called in, they have to have a place to refer them. So you need, and some of them could be referred to a community-based program. So, so I think we should take this opportunity and get more funding for community-based programs while we're advocating for the Marcus-
Thank you. There are many who-
Can I speak to this?
Sure. Delegate Hope and then Delegate Sullivan.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say, I'm vice chair of the Behavioral Health Commission, and we're looking at this very closely. I just want to respond to Senator Vol'as point about beds in the long term. In the long term, Virginia actually has more psychiatric beds than most states do. The problem is, is that what Debra Warren alluded to, and not alluded to, but directly to it, is that we don't have enough money in our community services for the prevention part. And I think it's important to sort of broaden the perspective here, that this is really a perfect storm of the crisis that we're in. It's not just to Arlington or the, or the region, it's the entire state. And with COVID, you see more people that are voluntarily committing, which I suppose, on the positive side, we're trying to remove the stigmatization of mental illness, and people are coming forward to be voluntarily hospitalized. We're also seeing higher numbers of involuntary hospitalizations, TDOs, as well, too, and that has led to the number of people needing psychiatric beds in the situation we're in. The problem got worse when the commissioner, without any legal authority, by the way, to do this, closed down all admissions to our behavioral health facilities at the state level. And the only thing that that did was it shifted the responsibility over to the CSBs virtually overnight. And I haven't been in this business as long as Debra Warren, I've been doing this for maybe 20 years here in Arlington, and I have never heard of any situation where law enforcement is sitting with patients in the emergency room for days to find a bed. And it wasn't until that happened in July that we started seeing this. So I think that we do have some ARPA funding that we've designated for January to start putting more money, more funding into psychiatric beds. We also have more money going into community health services as well, too, to prevent the crisis in the first place. We've got to do a lot more in order to do that, but the long-term plan is that we have to put those community services in place so that when someone needs help, and it's okay not to be okay, to come forward and get them assistance that they need. And that's also a workforce issue as well, too, that we have to address. So the short term is, we've got to figure out a way to find these beds and to, and to quickly, quickly get people the help that they need. But longer term, we've got to make that investment in community services. I have spoken to the department about the proposal to take those beds, those community beds that are part of the COPN process. It looks to me that that's a budget proposal and not anything that's definitive, so it has to go through the administration in order to do that, in order to appear in the governor's budget. I'm hopeful that we got their attention and time to get them to withdraw that proposal, but that's something that we need to keep a close eye on. But I think it's very indicative of the department trying to do whatever they can do to find a bed, and they're scouring all the COPN lists to find out who's put in a proposal and to see if they can buy those down. And I think it's something we'd be very vigilant about.
Thank you, Delegate Hope. Delegate Sullivan.
Could I ask Captain a question?
Sure.
It seems to be consensus here that we've got a money and a space issue, but I was interested in your comments about potential changes to the ECO and TDO process. If you had a magic wand, what would you change and why would that help get people out of the hallways?
Well, the ECO and TDO basically is, you know, it's something that's issued from a magistrate, which gives us a legal authority to detain somebody, right? So they have to be in our custody. In reference to waving a wand, what would be the best thing to get them out of our custody is to try to remove law enforcement from the process, period. Problem is, is that unfortunately, our DHS partners are very short-staffed as well. So I know Ms. Warren mentioned having some kind of mobile response teams and whatnot, where we could actually have mental health professionals deal with these individuals and have them more under their control and not so much law enforcement control. I think that benefits the individual as well, because now they can get the treatment that they need.
That's not going to happen in a hospital hallway.
No, not in a hospital hallway, but we're working right now to try to, try to see if we can utilize the Crisis Intervention Center instead of the hospital. So internally, we're trying to solve the problem collectively, together, and we're trying to see if there's a way that we can utilize some of the rooms at the Crisis Intervention Center, which are more calming rooms, which are much more pleasant, and are out of public view, where they can actually be held while treatment might be available there, and then police can still provide security at that location. So it's not what it's designed for, but it's a better alternative to what we're experiencing right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Rowling. I mean, I guess there's a couple of, and others have expertise, sorry, Senator Evan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question from Ms. Warren. If a million dollars was allocated for the Crisis Intervention Center, how many people would that help? Is that the equivalent of like a holding, a holding pattern for up to how many people at a time?
So there are five rooms at the, you have to think of it more in terms of bed days, because it depends on how many days a person would be there. But we are currently licensed for 23-hour crisis stabilization, and there are five rooms. So we, what we would use that money for is to staff up to meet the licensure standards for 23-hour crisis stabilization, which include nursing 24/7, you know, you have to have a prescriber available, which, that's a whole challenge right there, and a clinician with a license to be able to provide the assessment. So that's, we would use that money to staff that up that way.
Thank you.
I do want to add that it would be not possible for DHS to use our facility as an emergency department, you know, we would never be able to be licensed to provide all of the services, you know, that the emergency department at the hospital can provide.
Sure, so-
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we'll move towards action. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, actually, just a question on that. So it's, you keep saying 23-hour, there are 24 hours in a day. What happens that one hour?
Well, I, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't-
So it's, it's very complicated, but 23, you can get a license through the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to provide 23-hour crisis stabilization- of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to provide 23-hour crisis stabilization services, which is, you know, the opportunity to bring your clinical expertise forward to help calm somebody down. You know, it takes 12, 12 to 20 minutes to initially calm somebody down, but then some folks are so agitated and so ill that they need more time, or maybe they're impaired. They need more time to stabilize. Once you go past 23 hours, it becomes residential crisis stabilization, which is a different license and a different standard. We have heard of a one CSB getting, successfully getting a waiver to hold people beyond 23 hours, and that's something that, given this crisis, we would look at.
Yeah, thank you. So I know colleagues will have a lot of, have been working on this and have expertise. The first thought that occurs to me is, with respect to Monday afternoon, I'll just hope that you'll stay in touch with Ms. Callen, Ms. Friedman, and the county manager, and if there's something that the board can constructively do on that, please let us know. My instinct is perhaps not, but if it needs to be done, then one of us would be happy to be there, I'm sure. I think that perhaps maybe Ms. Krinen, I can ask you to touch base with Senator Favola on the Hospitals Association and just see if there's a follow-up there. Captain Rowling, we were in this room a year-plus ago, and the force said, everyone said that we needed to move towards mental health professionals and not officers doing this work, and this is an area where we have gone in the wrong direction fast, and I think all of us on the board are very concerned. I don't have any other closing remarks that immediately come to mind, except I think, I hope you know that the board would like to be as constructive as we possibly can. It is said that you're always, people are always better than they are on their worst day, and we've got to help out, so to the extent we can. Ms. Crystal.
It was a very important note on which to leave, and I hate to be super tactical, but I just, you know, Senator Evan, really appreciate your asking what that million-dollar ask would go towards. It's one, as our chair mentioned, we have been trying to put to the state and getting to the attention of the governor's staff, and if that's something that you think you might be able to champion for us, you know, to be able to use those five beds as a calming place, exactly as Ms. Warren suggested, we know that can serve the region as well as Arlington and get people out from police custody and into a place where they actually can be stabilized. This is a crisis years in the making, as Deborah so compellingly described, but it's also a crisis that has been precipitated by the state's decision to close the mental health hospitals, and so we are desperately asking for partnership, and we really appreciate your asking.
Mr. Chair, I just have one other additional comment.
And then you.
In the last budget, when we were there for a special session, we did allocate $10 million for crises recovery centers. Now, we have a Crisis Intervention Center in Arlington, but the dollars can be used for expanding services and for hiring staff. I don't know, 10 million's not very much when you're thinking statewide. So I don't know if they're looking for some new pilot or--
It's gone.
Oh, is that pet--
So that's--
My colleague--
It's been spent, it's gone, the 10 million is out the door. And they're ready to look for more ideas, because when we go back in January, there'll be another pot of money that the commissioner can use for these type of diversion programs.
We have to expand that pot considerably.
Thank you, Delegate. Thank you, Delegate Hope. It's the blessing of having someone very informed, but also the challenge, because you say it's already gone. Ms. Carvey.
Yeah, I think, I just want to thank everybody here, our officers, our public health people who are just dealing with this crisis that I think all of us have been trying to stop, and yet, from what I understand, there's a person who abused their position, not their authority, because they took a decision that apparently didn't really even have the authority to do, not talking with people. And this is, and we're trying to clean it up, and people are getting hurt. So I don't know if there's a way to get at the basis of it, that somebody somehow could do this and just create this huge crisis that is just destroying lives. That I do not know, and we won't go into it here. Yeah, we won't go into it here. But I do want to thank everyone here working so hard to try to, you know, to take care of people the best we can, given a really, really difficult situation, and thank you all.
That seems like an important note to end on, so know the county manager is so passionate about this, and we need to thank you. We need to work, keep working ourselves, all of us, to address it. If there's a connection, Delegate Sullivan and Captain Rowling, if there's a legal connection that you can make there to help address it, that's great. And then we need tactical, to be tactically smart to keep working on it. We are very lucky to have you as our delegation, and we're grateful for all that you've been doing. Please stay in touch. There's a number of these items where this Crisis Intervention Center is one of them, where we're looking at funding, we've made the case for the state. But let's stay in good touch on all of these pieces of legislation. And with that, thank you so much. We have to go do a motion for closed session. You guys, if you can, just bear with us 20 seconds, we'll finish that, and then we can all leave at the same time without. So I'll make the following motion. I move that the county board convene a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 for discussion regarding the appointment of the county attorney. Is there a second? All those in favor on the county board say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We're in closed session. That is well said. It is a drop-the-mic-or-drop-the-gavel moment. Thank you, Min Chao. We're so honored. Thank you. With that, we'll applaud one more time. With that, I think that is all that has come before the board. Congratulations, Ms. Cor, and we adjourned.